Call the meeting to order, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approval of the agenda. We have two items under new business being added. One is appeal of zoning administrator Williams and nine C Thompson. Just put Thompson lot, and when we get to that, I'll explain why that is being added. Is there any other changes to the agenda? Counsel? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Joe, second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes. The November 6, 2024 regular meeting, you received it in your packet. Is there any changes or corrections needed within that set of minutes? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the November 6, 2024 regular meeting?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Sheldon, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries, four in favor, none against, one abstention. Now, the November 12, 2024 special meeting minutes. Is there anything in that short meeting that needs to be changed? Do I have a motion to approve the November 12, 2024 special meeting?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries, four in favor, none against, one abstention. This brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time, is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed. We will then move on, we have one public hearing, we will recess the regular council meeting and enter into our public hearing. We have one public hearing before us this evening in accordance with the official mailed and public notice in the matter of an ordinance establishing cannabis retail registration and compliance check procedures. It is our intention that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. If you wish to speak, please sign in on the signup sheet at the back of the room. Procedure is as follows. Presentation by staff followed by questions of staff, then public input. Raise your hand, when recognized by the mayor, approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. State your comments and position. No one will be allowed to speak a second time until everyone has had a chance to be heard. First, we will hear questions for clarification. Second, public in favor of the proposal. Third, public speaking against the proposal. After everyone who wishes to speak has had the opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed. After closure of the public hearing, the council will deliberate and take action as appropriate. Members of the audience do not participate in the council's discussion unless a majority of the council concedes to hear additional information or questions. The hearing is now in session. Vicki?
So, as you know, the state of Minnesota enacted state statute 342, which legalized the sale of cannabis. This is some time ago now, we're finally at the point where the state is ready to start issuing licenses. Under the provisions of the statute, the city is responsible registering cannabis businesses within our jurisdiction. We have to certify that it's located in the proper land use district and must adopt ordinance compliance check procedures. This ordinance, 839, is in front of you that imposes those regulations requiring the registration, also cannabis event standards, and also compliance procedures that would be conducted by the police department. All cannabis-related businesses within the jurisdiction of SOC Center will be registered with the city prior to the state issuing the license at the Office of Cannabis Management. We will then verify where they are, that they're located in the zoning district, there's no violations on the property, that all taxes are paid, and then the police department will be doing those compliance checks on those businesses. In addition, the ordinance lays out standards for cannabis events and limits the number of retail licenses to be issued in SOC Center to two. However, we're not required to approve issuance of any licenses if Stearns County as a whole has issued one for every 12,500, which calculates out to about 13 countywide. Now, the number two that we put in there, we're not required to do two, we could make that, we could limit it to five, we could limit it to whatever, but we are not required to as long as Stearns County has one for every 12,500. We're legally required to issue or allow at least one. That's kind of how that, how that works out. So, we put the number two in there thinking, you know, maybe we'd get two. The state of Minnesota is only issuing 188 of these. The idea of us getting two is pretty slim anyway. So, but that number is a number that you guys can work with if you want to change that. This ordinance has the responsibilities of the license holders, it talks about the city's review process, the event procedures and standards, the how they, how a business would register their cannabis business, the compliance checks by law enforcement, the retail sales regulations and enforcement and appeals. So, there, what, if you go through the ordinance, which I provided you ahead of time, there's a couple small tweaks. The county attorney actually wrote this ordinance, so I don't, you know, we didn't make a lot of changes, we just adapted it to SOC Center. One thing on the limit, this replaces the cannabinoid or the low potency derived from hemp that we had done about two years ago. They are now incorporated into this whole ordinance, they are not subject to the limitation of two. We actually have nine registered in SOC Center right now with the office, the office down in the state. So, under section 6.1, where we limit the number of businesses, there's an exemption in there that that does not apply to the low potency cannabinoids derived from hemp. So, that's one place that's different. And also in that same section, under the registration fee, there's an extra provision, they don't have the $500 fee, it's by statute, the cannabinoids is $125. So, there's those two provisions as they relate to the low potency by hemp in the registration of the retail businesses. So, those are really the only two changes in this ordinance. Later on, not part of this public hearing, but as a part of the public hearing that the zoning, planning and zoning had, that's where it comes into the land use side of it. So, this part is, how do you register, how many can you have, and what are your requirements to have the business? On the planning commission ordinance, that was where it can be located and, and what those uses are. So, this public hearing now is specifically for the registration piece. I was asked what a cannabis event is, there's actually events like, they might go out into a farm field and have a big party and be able to smoke. That's what it is, and they have provisions for what, I don't see that that happening here, we don't have very many large areas that you could do that, but it is something that is allowed by the state. Does anybody have any questions for me about how we're going to go about implementing this?
If there is a, an allowance for two, does that come at a first come, first served, or how is that?
How the Office of Cannabis Management is doing it is they had their first round, which was for the social, social inequity people that were applying, and they, they selected 38 people, and more than that applied, so then the ones that weren't in the first cut that were eligible, then they go into the second one, competing with everybody else for the other 150. If they have more than 150, then they do the lottery.
A lottery, okay.
So, they could, but before they even do the lottery, they check with us to make sure that they're in the right land use district and their taxes are paid and all of that, so.
So, there's a chance even that one license request could be denied if it goes to a lottery?
If it goes to lottery and they don't get picked, yes.
We basically could end up with none. Or two at the most.
Correct.
Any other questions for Vicki?
Just double checking, and maybe this is a really dumb question, but I don't live in this world at all, so. This doesn't talk about consumption at all, is that a true story? Is, are there other regulations and ordinances that go with consumption in?
So, we had a separate ordinance earlier, which was like, the statute allowed us to adopt an ordinance that you can't do it in public places, and so that's what we did. Otherwise, you know, they can do it at their home, they can do it at the yard, they can do it somewhere they're invited, but you can't in public, like you can't step out on the street or in the park, but you can in private areas.
Okay, I forgot about that. Thanks for the reminder, Vicki.
Any other questions, concerns? Nothing, I will open it up to the public. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this subject in favor, against, or need clarification? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor, against, or need clarification? Call a third time, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor, against, or need clarification about this proposal? Is there any last minute questions from the council?
No.
Then our public hearing is now closed, and we will reconvene our regular council meeting. Reports and presentations, police department, Joe?
Good evening, mayor and council. I got October numbers, kind of on par with, with normal. Some of the higher number, higher numbers, things that stuck a little bit. 11 alarm calls, we actually had 30 medicals for the month, which is a little higher than normal. 13 welfare checks, again, if you look in the, the traffic stuff, handful of tickets written for speed, another handful, 11 or so for the use of wireless device, that's still kind of the big one, it's causing, when we do have crashes, it seems like it's more wireless device issues than even speed now. Got a, just over a dozen people driving with no license or driving after vacation, with a total of 871, which is on par. I mean, October through February, historically, you'll see we're around that 800 to 900 ICR range. So, nothing too crazy for October. Other highlights, I did get a call with that 30 medicals, when I was looking at that earlier, I looked at our response time, because someone called and asked what our response time is for a 911 emergency, so I just did medical emergencies, our department will respond. If you call 911, I just did the medicals, but 911 call, if we're going red lights and sirens, we'll be at your house under two minutes at a time. That's our average, it was a two minutes and three seconds average from the point we get dispatched. So, that's pretty dang good. Other items, we're going to start working on winter parking. December starts the winter parking, so we're going to start doing warnings or putting, last year we, two weeks before December, we started putting those orange slips on windows just to remind people. We'll start that next week a little bit, but probably going to have us wait till after Thanksgiving, then we'll put them on, start putting heavy that after Friday, then that weekend before, just so we don't get confusion there. We are in week two of our new Tyler Web RMS, our new record system. It's going a lot bumpier than I anticipated, so I don't know what you're going to have for numbers for November, for the next one, it's, it's not going well.
Questions, concerns? I think the parking on the streets, I think we're educating people enough. I noticed there's a lot of people already parking up in driveways and getting stuff off the streets, so hopefully it's.
With this snow and stuff too, people kind of remember, and like you said, we have those, the night shift guys, we made up last year, bright orange, just a copy of the ordinance, the morning aid goes into effect December 1st.
Yep.
So, those guys do a good job of putting those out, you know, a week or so before this December, and people, for the most part, catch on. So, especially this year, now we got snow already, a little bit of snow, so people start paying attention.
Yep. With the new record, with the new issues that you're having, is that, will that cause any issues going forward with any keeping of information, or is this all?
We had a conversation today about, last year we got pretty good tabs of how many warnings, especially like, for example, this parking issue. Last year we did a pretty good, had a pretty good idea of how many warnings we issued, how many admin citations. We don't know how that, they changed all of our wording or how we can document that, and they kind of just made a big lump sum, so like, all of our ordinance or ticket violations is kind of going to one lump sum where we can't like, there's no easy right now for us to divide it up. So, it's something we're going to work on, like I said, I thought, it's just a little bit bumpier on the back end of things as far as like the records part. What the guys are using in the car, computer system, that's working flawless. There's just a lot of, there's a lot of backend issues as far as like what Melissa's entering and how she's entering it, and this record stuff, basically it's admin stuff that we're calling for answers and we're not getting any answers yet. So, I anticipate in the next two or three weeks, we'll get it figured out, it's just there's a lot of. The biggest problem is every agency does things a little bit different, so the people that are helping us in the backside, they're trying to make things work for everybody, and it's just kind of, it's in tires Stearns County, including St. Cloud and the sheriff's office and all the small agencies too, so it's just a lot. So, it's, the program works, it's just we got to work out kinks on the backend.
Got it.
But it's going pretty, it's not going quite that bad, it's not great.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Department, Ben?
Good evening, mayor and council. Over this past month, the parks were gone over with the mulching lawn mowers to grind up all the leaves, so the lawn mowers are now cleaned up and put away for the season. Christmas lights were installed in the parks and in town, those are going to get plugged in next week, and the main stringers will be installed across Main Street next week in Sinclair Lewis Avenue. The heat was turned on in the buildings and the systems were checked over at that time, and any simple or cleaning maintenance was done as well. The arena is up and running, general maintenance repairs are made to the building. The compressor system is currently working as intended, and we do have some open skate sessions scheduled at the arena for December. We try and slide those in around any hockey hours that are already allotted for, so we're trying to work those in whenever we can for the public to use the building. Nikki will post those times on the Facebook page, so people can check that. Outdoor rink building, we're doing some maintenance there, wall was replaced, doing some painting, just miscellaneous repairs before we get into that season, hopefully this year. Airport, we did a bunch of tree removal out near County Road 186 to prep for the AWAS relocation project, so that is now done and all the stumps have been removed, the piles will be burnt sometime in the near future before we get too much snow on them. The snow removal equipment was prepped and is in place out at the airport. The trucks were out this morning to spread salt on the roadways and sidewalks were cleaned, and we'll be doing the same thing again tomorrow. Gravel roads and alleyways were bladed one last time, and a final load of tar patch material was placed around manholes and water shut offs that were in need, so that we don't nick them with the plows or anything. We did also fill in that cracked tar area in the new industrial park before winter hit here and waiting on a final repair decision on that, so we'll work on that over the winter. Any questions I can answer?
Questions?
Good job, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Commission report, Sarah?
Good evening, mayor and council. In your packet you have a copy of our agenda from the November 12 meeting. We did hold a public hearing, as Vicki stated, about the land use amendments regarding cannabis ordinances and which zoning districts that it will be allowed in town, and as an action item later on your agenda. I do have reports and presentations. The month of October, we did 13 permits with a total value of 716,000. A year ago, we did nine permits with a total construction value of 192,000. Zoning permits, I kind of did a, not quite the year end, but from January to that October meeting list of that. And working on nuisance complaints, so this year I've had a total of 42 nuisance complaints. 28 are, have been completed and 14 are, they're still in progress, that we're working on those. And then the other thing that is added to the agenda, as Warren stated, under new business, is a Lake Shore alteration to appeal a zoning administrator decision.
Questions?
I appreciate seeing the nuisance totals and, and the work completed on those.
Any other things? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Airport Board report?
So, the airport board met today, regular session at, at 1:00 PM, it was actually rescheduled from last week. They reviewed the status of the land acquisition project. We have an, an attorney opinion has been sought regarding the interpretation of the FAA guidance on the reimbursement. So, this has to do with the business relocation component of that agreement, and so once we get that attorney opinion, we'll reconvene and discuss how to move forward. Looking at design ideas for the 80 by 80 hangar project, which is a 2025. We expect to go to bids in early 2025, so we can get a summer build if, if at all possible, depending on the selected contractor. The state has put out some money for state grant for equipment needs. The airport board passed on applying for the grant for this year simply because we don't really have any big equipment needs. You know, we have the snow blower and we have the mower that we need out there, so they didn't want to buy a piece of equipment, they're just going to sit. And then we also reviewed the capital improvement plan for future needs as they relate to the FAA and state funding. This, we have a 20-year plan and then a five-year plan. They were looking at the five-year plan, and I think after we get the land acquisition and we get the 80 by 80 hangar in, then we're kind of going to be in maintenance mode with, you know, the tar maintenance and that type of thing going forward for a while before there's another big project. No action requested of the council tonight.
Questions?
With the attorney opinion, is it going to another source, or is it just getting, what attorney is it that?
We'd been working with our city attorney, but this was more of a specialized, so we contracted with a different attorney that specializes in these types of reimbursements and is very familiar with the FAA circular guidance on these types of projects. So, we thought rather than having our attorney have to educate himself on all of that, just go to somebody that actually does that for a living.
And this is us seeking, or I know there were some talks at one point between the two parties, I didn't know.
We're seeking an opinion based on, the, the other attorney is saying that we don't know what we're doing, basically. So, we said, well, we'll get an official attorney opinion with somebody that does that for a living to make sure that the guidance that we're being recommended from our, from our consultant is, is accurate and correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, then we will go to the property liability insurance renewal. Mark?
Good evening, mayor and council. Got some good news for you this year in the insurance world. The League of Minnesota Cities is going to be distributing 5 million workers' compensation dividends to its members this year, that'll be the first time they've had a distribution since 2012. And they're going to distribute another 3 million to the property casualty members in December. Last year, the city received a portion of those dividends, and last year they gave about 3 million as well, so whatever, I'm sure it's going to be very close. Dividends are paid higher to members that have been members longer, so it's benefits. SOC Center, they've been members since like 1987, I believe, so. So, that's the first good news, and there's, the rate changes for 2025, brace yourself, because this is unheard of, but work comp is down 20% for next year. They've been battling post-traumatic stress claims since around 2006, and they finally got their head wrapped around that. And so, but the, the different classes, depending on the job class, will determine what rates take a bigger, bigger cut. And the property casualty overall is going to have a six and a half percent rate decrease. I see most, most property, the buildings and equipment, yeah, will be taking a decrease of about 8%. So, that's, that's really good news, and that's probably the first time I've heard of rate decreases anywhere in the last five or six years, so. The, uh, the next item I have to discuss is the liability limits and the coverage limits, and whether the city wants to waive or not waive the tort liability. That's, so this, this, the statute limit for cities is a maximum of 500,000 per claimant and 1.5 million per occurrence, and these limits apply to whether the claim is against the city or against an individual officer, employees, or against both. So, you'll, you'll, you get to decide whether you want to waive, you have waived in the past, and you've also purchased an extra million dollar umbrella, just to make things right. The League of Minnesota Cities policy actually gives a coverage limit of 2 million per occurrence, and, and they actually have higher aggregate limits in a, in a lot of cases. And I have a, I think you have a packet that has those higher limits, I won't go over them specifically, but most of them are around, are around 3 million aggregate, which just means that you could have multiple claims in one year and you still got coverage. I always ask, what is the, why does the League of Minnesota provide higher coverage limits than the statutory limits? And the reason is to give the members, cities better protection, and the statutory limits cap the site, cities liability for many types of claims, but some liability claims, which are listed in the next section I'll talk about, are covered by the statutory limits. So, they, they just want to make sure that you're, you're all covered. Another reason to provide higher liability, higher limits is because it's increasingly more common to see contracts that require more than the statutory limits of two, of 1.5 million. And, and more common figure is 2 million, so the league will now meet these requirements. But if even higher limits are required, there are options to increase those limits. The four good reasons why cities strongly consider carrying the excess coverages, which provides higher liability limit, higher limits of liability, excess coverage is available in increments of a million and up to 5 million. And this, uh, the statutory tort limits either do or do not apply to several types of claims, and some of those would be claims under the federal civil rights laws, claims for tort liability that the city has assumed by contract, claims for actions in, in another state, claims based on liquor sales, claims based on taking, taking theory, suits challenging regulations, and include inverse condemnation, so. There is a chart or a table on the back that kind of breaks down whether you, whether you have the statutory limits for a claim or if you waive those limits and, and if you have excess coverage. So, uh, another, the city is required, in a lot, in a lot of cases, they're required to have contracts that are higher than the coverage limits, so that's another reason why they have the 2 million limit. And there may be more than one political subdivision covered under cities coverage, like HRA or EDA, and, and then, sorry, who needs excess liability coverage? If anything, excess liability coverage is even more important to a small city rather than a large city. If the city ends up with more than, more liability than it has coverage, the city will have to either draw on existing funds or they'll have to go to the taxpayers for, for a judgment. So, that's the reason that we had the higher excess in the past. Cities waived the statutory limits would be able to recover up to 2 million and rather than the statutory limit of 500,000 per claimant, because the waivers increases exposure, and the premium is roughly 3% higher for that coverage when they waive those limits. And I think the city has mainly done that in the past because it's probably just the right thing to do, but you still get to decide. And, uh, again, it's, it's not necessarily simple, but the table on this that I sent in the chart actually gives you kind of a shorthand version of, of the various coverage structure options and the different, different options for you, so. You can decide whether you want to waive those, those limits, or if you want to follow the statutory limits, and you can decide that tonight and get back to me. You have any questions about, about the coverage?
Well, you know, homeowner's insurance is going up, car insurance is going up, and you're saving us money, thank you. Thank you, Mark, appreciate that.
I think the cities have a better maintenance program than most people, and they, they repair things before they get to.
Yeah.
So, that's probably the biggest reason.
Appreciate your work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to action items, 7A. Approve or deny the waiver of the tort limits and purchase of excess liability?
So, this is what Mark was just talking about. If we wanted to waive the tort limits. on the liability coverage and the second part of that is if we want to purchase the excess liability, which is basically the umbrella policy. So in the past, we have waived and in the past, we have purchased excess liability policy. I think the council at that time thought that, you know, if you had a police car accident or a snowplow accident that hurt multiple people, that it was better for the people that were filing the claim to be able to access those funds rather than it falling back to the city. So, I don't know, what are your thoughts?
Questions? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we waive the statutory limits and purchase the excess liability insurance.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Heidi. I have a second by Shallen. Any other discussion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7B, approve ordinance 839 establishing cannabis retail business registration and compliance check regulations.
So this is the ordinance that we talked about in the public hearing and you have the full ordinance in front of you. The only changes that we discussed tonight was to exempt the low potency hemp products from the total number to be issued and also to change that registration fee to $125 for those. So the thing tonight that if you decide to adopt this, just want to confirm that two is the magic number that we're going to settle on, that was shown in the ordinance, if that's what you want to do. And other than that, everything is pretty much right out of the state statute and put together by the county attorney. The reason we went with that one was because we're trying to get as many cities and the county kind of all with a very similar ordinance, so cross jurisdiction, they would be the same.
Okay. Questions? Do I have anyone that wants to make a motion?
I think my only question here would be the debate on whether or not we want to limit it to two or if we want to have that open to more or what we'd be doing on that. I mean, from the sounds of it, with the state limiting it to no more than 150, I mean, we may not even get one if we try to. I'm not a big fan of limiting, you know, businesses' opportunities by saying, well, we're going to cap it at two. Competition will determine whether or not those, more than those can survive anyways based on what they're able to do and some of those things. Be my first thought on maybe not having limitation, but I'm, you know, again, want to have a discussion on it.
I agree. I think in the past, there's been frustration by people who think that we should limit something similar like our liquor licenses for selling alcohol, which this is on every level is equally legal. So, limiting does, you know, put us in a box in a bit, a bit. And like you said, competition will show, competition's good for business, so I agree. At the number, I don't know. I mean, unlimited? I don't know if that's how we put it, but.
Sounds good to me.
One of the things, you know, and I could see that, both your points, the state's only doing one for every 12,500 people. This city isn't even half that.
No.
So to say two isn't really limiting much. Or one, it isn't limiting anything because the state could say, you ain't getting one at all. They're the ones doing the limiting. We can send in 50 applications and end up with zero.
Well, correct, but if we, we wouldn't, you know, put in to say, well, 50 could be approved either.
No.
And if it goes to a lottery, they, do they limit the geographic location for how many of that lottery goes to a specific area of the county? If it's per one, if it's one per 12,000 people, who's to say that three of those might be allowed in Stock Center? Because it's still, we're still one, you know, we're still counted in the county population, so.
I don't know how they're going to do that as far as, are they going to, it could be, everything could be, end up in St. Cloud.
It could. Or everything could be in Stock Center. Not to say, I'm just throwing it out there that, I don't know. I don't know what the, I agree with Joe, not limiting.
I do too. I agree with Joe.
Okay, well, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve it with no limit.
Okay, I have a motion by Diane to approve ordinance 839 with no limit on the licenses. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Joe. Any more discussion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Extentions? Motion carries four in favor, one against. 7C, approve ordinance 840 authorizing summary publication.
As you know, the state statute allows the city to publish a summary rather than the full text of the ordinance as a cost savings measure as long as they concur that it adequately relates to the public what the ordinance contains. This approval requires a minimum of four-fifths vote on the members present. The title of the ordinance is ordinance 840 authorizing summary publication of 839 establishing regulations for cannabis registration, cannabis events, and compliance procedures.
Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 840?
Make the motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7D, approve ordinance 841 amending zoning ordinance for cannabis businesses.
This is the ordinance that the planning commission had their public hearing on last week and that implements land use criteria for cannabis businesses. It restricts retail sales to the commercial districts of C1 and C2, which is the downtown and the freeway commercial area with manufacturing and distribution allowed in the industrial commercial district. The commission also reviewed whether the city should implement a separation area around schools and daycares and they were recommending the city adopt the same distance as the county. The statute states the city can restrict businesses up to 1,000 feet from a school or 500 feet from a daycare. And you'll see that in the, in your packet here, there is a map that shows that boundaries, what those boundaries are and how much of the city would be out of, wouldn't be able to get a license for if we implemented those standards. The other thing in the, that's been changed by the county since we had our, or since that hearing was they're doing the retail sales instead of from, prohibited from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM, they just went 10 to 10. So after 10:00 AM and up till 10:00 PM, they can be open for business. And then the other thing to, they were meeting on was the 1,000 from the feet of the school, 500 of a daycare, and 500 from a public park. They didn't finalize that discussion yesterday and so I don't know what their final decision is going to be on that. They have a much bigger counties, I mean, they're talking mostly rural area, which they are governing, so they're not going to impact as much of the area as we will by imposing that same restriction. We can go up to that amount or we can have anything less. So if you don't want to have a restriction around those areas at all, you can do that. If you want to have a lesser number, you can do that. What you have here is the solid line is the 1,000 feet around the school and the dash line is 500 feet. Same with the red lines, which are the, from the daycare. So you've got the two schools and then we have the learning tree here. And then there also are the parks are kind of green, they don't really show up that well, but, so we need to have a determination from you on whether or not we want to enact that restriction. We kind of set the zoning ordinance up that if it is okay for a liquor store, it's okay for this type of a business as well. So we kind of mimic that.
One of the things with the planning commission is we went with the county, tried to make everything streamlined again. Also, resident, R1 areas, they cannot sell out of their house. We've had a lot of people come in thinking they're going to apply and be able to sell it out of their house, that ain't happening. And we also put a restriction that RC, if I remember right, RC, residential, commercial cannot. So anything that has residential is not allowed. So you can't run a business out of your house in an RC with that. So they have to be in a C1 or C2.
So I think the determination that we need to know or maybe some discussion is whether we want to put those separation distances from the school, the daycare, and the parks.
I guess with the 1,000-foot radius, it really limits much of the downtown area. So I don't know, I mean, I guess I don't know if the 1,000-foot radius is really feasible. I don't know what other spots are potentially left.
I see Fourth Street, Fourth Street and South, if I'm seeing this correct, so by, you know.
The 1,000-foot circle around the Holy Family School is basically the one that's going to be the one that takes most of the downtown.
Right. Yep.
The one around the high school, I don't think it affects anything.
And that's in a different district, or zoning district, at least most of it is, it's all residential for the most part.
Right. And Learning Tree's that other one that's up there and that's been across the street from a off-sale liquor store for how many years?
And a smoke shop.
And a smoke shop too, so that's kind of the reason why we weren't so certain about the distances.
Yeah, I.
So the dotted line is a possibility?
Right, because the solid line is 1,000 from a school and 500 is the dotted. And then on the daycare, 1,000, or 500 is the solid line and 250 is the dotted.
Right.
So it's half. So you basically could go 500, 250, or none at all, or 100, anything under 500 you could do.
So if you had that, within that 1,000, I mean, that's much of downtown that is not, and same thing here, like across from the Learning Tree, I mean, across the street is like that.
Well, the two smoke shops that we have existing right now would be not able to purchase.
They're not able to, no. They won't be able to sell it. Smoke shops are not included, if that's what we were told at the planning commission. Smoke shops are not going to be able to sell cannabis.
They will if they get the license.
Okay.
I thought that was the whole premise of a lot of these kind of pop-ups happening recently was in preparation of being able to eventually sell.
Yeah, they need to get the licenses and there's a lot of requirements on the licenses with secure storage and how much they can have and they have to have a vault and they have to have 24-hour surveillance and they have to have a lot of things that I think maybe some of these businesses are going to say, no, I'm out.
Right.
You know? You could do half, you could do 500 from the school and that would take care of that downtown area, or you could just not do it at all. It's just what we're looking to you for is what are your thoughts on allowing that or do we just allow it by zoning, just like we do with liquor stores?
The planning commission didn't put a restriction on the distances, waiting for the county to act on it.
So the county will trump us regardless?
No.
We can, we can set our own.
Right.
We can set our own.
But since they didn't act on it, now it's back in our lap, so.
I guess I would be in favor of moving towards the, just doing it by zoning, like a liquor license or a smoke shop or whatever, having it in those areas and, because like I said, I feel like a lot of these distances that are in there really are limit.
I'd be curious to see where the businesses that could actually operate within even a 500 distance currently lie. I'd have to have like an over, like a, you know, transparency map over our zoning map, but.
Well, the C1 district is basically downtown.
Yep.
Probably from the river to the library and the, and then a block each way, I think, on Sinclair about that. And then the C1 is everything from probably like Casey South down to the freeway and then over to Walmart in that area.
I'm inclined to agree with Shallen with just the zoning.
It really is on the corridor.
Yeah.
The main corridors.
Yeah.
Yeah, my thought is, you know, if we, you know, allow liquor stores liquor to be sold in the areas of these schools or daycares and stuff like that, I mean, the institution itself, that's, you know, making the sales is responsible for making sure they're, you know, not selling it illegally and those type of things and, so I'd be inclined to go with the zoning map as far as the eligibility for that.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, well. I can't figure out whatever. I'm too far ahead here.
Page 51.
Yeah.
Is he going to make a motion?
I don't know.
He's working on it.
I thought he fell asleep.
No, I know. I did get back to the right page. I guess, so what would the motion be then to, I'll make a motion to approve with the, going in line with the zoning districts, is that what the motion would be?
You would just take item K out if that's what you're trying to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So rather than have a secondary restriction, just go straight with what zoning allows?
That's, yes, ma'am.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Shallen, second by Diane. Is there any other discussion? Does everyone understand the motion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7E, approve ordinance 842 authorizing summary sub-publication.
This is the same summary publication request that I did for the prior ordinance allowing us to publish the summary rather than the full text. And basically what this ordinance does is establish land use criteria for cannabis-related businesses.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7F, approve resolution 2024-92 authorizing inter-fund transfers.
This is the year-end, the inter-fund transfers that we normally do to close accounts, move funds to and from capital projects, sinking fund and other various uses, with the following that we have recommended. Of course, we have the fire hall portion of debt service, we have the stormwater utility money that goes into debt service, that's for the 12th, or the Fourth Street project. We have sinking fund transfers and that was bringing money back from formerly purchased the Public Works truck and also there's some money coming back where the police department last year had gotten that grant for the cameras and now we're pulling back some of that money to actually spend it. There's the abatement for the apartment complex, so one more year after this, after this year that we will now have recouped all the money that we had to invest in putting in the infrastructure and purchasing the land and the platting for that project at Main Streeters. 2,500 from the TIF fund to the administration, to the general fund for administration. We have some project transfers of $242,000 and what that is, is there was some funds from the, for the truck stop stormwater that was getting moved into the stormwater utility fund in order to help fund that project and then also the airport operating fund to their project. And then we have closing of some project funds. The big one is actually this 2022 project, there was funds left in that, we had some cost savings during it, so those leftover funds will be transferred into the debt service for that project, so that'll allow us to levy less in future years for those. And then we have the South Industrial Park is being closed out, the Authors Edition infrastructure being closed out, and then also closing out funds that we had used on what was going to be the hotel project. So those are the ones highlighted in blue on your chart. The reason they're in blue is it'll be a little bit different because there'll be, that's actual cash transfer that will have some interest applied to that for the October 30th bank reconciliation. And then finally, we had some special revenue fund transfers for the library, the senior center, and the arena. So actually, the total inter-fund transfers is $1,820,336.27.
I just have one question that the resolution adopts it the fourth day of December 2024, which would be the first meeting of December.
Right, and I moved it up, so it will be changed.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2024-92?
Motion to. I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7G, approve health insurance renewal for employees.
So with our health insurance plan up for renewals, we went out for bids for alternative plans to determine if a change should be considered, so we had the rates for. So we had the rates for our current Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is an ICR plan, came in slightly below what we actually budgeted. So in addition, some employees have indicated they'll not take the family plan, which will result in some further changes, or some, some further savings. So we will be able to come in actually less than what we had anticipated. We also looked to PEAP, which is the Minnesota Public Plan. Those rates were about 17% higher than what we are going to get with our existing plan, so we scrapped that one. And then we also looked at a new group plan, and that just ended up not being a fit for us at all, based on what the needs of our employees are. So due to the bids received, we just recommend we continue with the renewal of our existing plan, which is a Blue Cross Blue Shield ICR plan for our 2025 health insurance.
Questions? Do I have a motion to approve the continuation?
Motion to approve.
By Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shaolin. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. 7H, approve resolution 2024-93 Authorizing Sale of Lot.
Another purchase agreement came in under the wire last Friday for three lots up in the Authors Edition, lots four, five, and six, block one. We're just looking for the council to authorize the mayor and myself to execute all the documents necessary to complete that sale. That is resolution 2024-93 Authorizing the Execution of the Closing Documents. This will mean that we'll have nine of the 19 lots will be sold, so.
Comments?
Was there a threshold? Did we talk about how many of them sold or before release, marketing the next portions or?
Well, we talked to the EDA about that, and they kind of said that once there's five lots left, that they would start looking at another phase. But I think with the pace that they're selling, that maybe we need to look at it a little bit sooner than that. But I'll bring that up at their next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2024-93?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, bids for building improvements.
So we had the bids for the proposed building improvements, which were the membrane roofs, the shingle roof, and the rooftop air. We opened those on Wednesday, November 13th. We've been working through the numbers, just to kind of confirm all the math. We had a total of 20 bidders, so that was really good between the three projects. I think we had 10 for the membrane roof, so that was really good. We'll have a recommendation at the December 4th meeting for you, exactly how we, how we think it should go forward. And then if that's successful, then we'll get those contracts out right away, because there's a pretty good lead time on some of the equipment costs. So just information, no action for you tonight.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right. We'll move on to new business, RFP for audit services.
So this is, we had increased costs for auditing services. We reached out to neighboring cities to get an idea of what increases they were seeing. They kind of resulted in moderate increases. One lost their auditor, and one went out for RFPs and didn't get any responses. I think we're having, there's going to be more and more difficulty finding auditing firms to audit governmental units. People are going into other fields, I guess, is what's going on. We have risen, ours have risen some, both to inflation and with the cost of implementation of new auditing procedures. However, Clifton Larson Allen has been doing ours for some time. They also do the public utility. And so it's kind of, that's good as far as trying to merge our two audits together. There's only one new auditing procedure, or new GASB audit procedure to be implemented this year, so it probably will, then I talked, I called them last Friday, and they said that we'll see a very minor, if any, increase next year. And so I still wanted to bring it to you. Do you want us to still go out and try to seek another auditor, or because Clifton Larson is, because they're telling us it's going to be relatively flat next year, do we stay with that and then jump on it earlier for future years? Just wanted to get your opinion on whether we should send out that request for proposals.
Comments or concerns?
I feel like, I think you guys have worked really well for the last several years, working through the new process of going in-house to online submissions and kind of knowing their process. And if it's not going to be a huge increase, I feel comfortable staying with them. But I don't know how strongly anyone else feels.
I agree with you, Heidi.
Actually, staying with them would make sense, because I know there's a lot of cities around the state that didn't ever get their auditing done, because there's no firms out there to do it. Plus, a side note, the PUC has already extended their side of it out.
Okay.
To Clifton Allen, so if it works together, I would think would stay the same.
Yeah.
I think too, with the time of year that it is, as we're approaching the end to get the RFPs back and, you know, have time to evaluate and make a decision, it's probably difficult. So to stay with them going through the, you know, year-end 2024.
We typically do it in like March.
And then, you know, if, if in '25, you're looking and say, okay, let's, let's explore just to make sure we're keeping them honest on, you know, what they're charging and some of those things, that'd be probably the more prudent time to, to go out for that.
Right. So, so you want a motion or general consensus, just to keep?
Just to let it, just keep, stay with this, yeah.
Is that fine with everybody?
Yeah, I like what Joe said about, you know, later time, maybe.
Okay. 9B, appeal of zoning administrator. Got a letter in here based on Mr. Williams appealed Sarah's decision on replacing a whole, his shoreline back to normal, and fines and everything, and the Planning Commission acted on it. It's pretty much cut and dried unless someone appeals it himself or at the next meeting. So whoever voted yes for it can come back and say they want to look at it again, but it's kind of after the fact, so.
Okay.
That, no action on our part. It's just information thing on that. 9C, Thompson Lot. Bruce Thompson's been in and talked to Sarah and myself numerous times. He's on 8th Street there, and he wants us to consider possibly taking ownership of that holding pond. And/or even that shed that's down there. And we haven't talked numbers, we haven't done anything, and it's something he wants us to consider.
The benefit to him is less for the upcoming project, meaning downside to us is increased cost.
Right. We're maintaining it already now. That whole holding pond, we're doing all the mowing and everything already. But he's also looking at the amount of frontage he's got, which would affect his assessment.
Right.
So we're trying to find different ways of looking at how we can help him out or.
Was, wasn't there going to be a recalculation of his assessment that we were shown initially, based on that holding pond and stuff? Was there anything redone, recalculated there?
His initial assessment, we were going to redo some recalculation, giving him some credit for it, the fact that we have the easement over the pond and that he can't do anything with it. We haven't, we haven't done that assessment, recalculation yet, simply we don't have final numbers.
Yeah.
And, but he's been in pretty much weekly, wanting to know, do we have a number? Would be interested in purchasing that property or taking ownership of the property? And then he just doesn't, he is, he is, from his perspective, he has a real concern with his liability for that being there.
Okay.
You know, so that was kind of, he says, I just feel better at night if I didn't have to worry about that. And I don't, I don't know why he worries about it, but he does. And so I think that's very real to him, and he just wants resolution to it. If the city is amenable to having a discussion with him about taking ownership of that, then we would actually sit down and look at what the numbers might be and just find out what exactly he's thinking.
I told him I'd bring it to the council just for, as ideas, so the council can think about different ways of working with him on it and besides redoing the numbers and.
Yeah.
And then if the council agrees to it, we can always go and start pushing, crunching numbers then, and seeing what we're going to do or what he wants compared to what we're willing, and if it's even a viable thing on our part.
I, I don't think there's anything wrong with having the discussion, and I think we should be open to it.
Right. But usually, you know, when you have five people and you can all have the chance to think about things on the side, and we can get creative in certain things, there's no problem with that.
Right.
So.
We'll, we'll come back with some options.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that was strictly information there. Consent agenda, we have a scheduled claims of $42,281.35, and a list of checks for October Is there any questions on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items.
Just a couple of things reminding you that there's the public hearing on the budget, December 4th at 6:30. I think you all have got your proposed property taxes in the mail, so everybody has that, so they're all aware of it, plus we advertised it in the paper. And then also your spectrum channel, spectrum and charter channel lineup changes are attached. And that's what I have.
Then that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Shaolin. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.